Joy in heaven, how it will be done. By our kingdom come, how it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and thy reward and the glory of heaven. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council and I welcome everyone here. It was a little damp today, but it was a much-needed night's dampness, and we thank those who have come out or come in. We will open the floor to the citizens. And are there anybody who would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, we have a quiet bunch. Moving along to the consent calendar. On the consent calendar are the items that are considered routine and will be approved in one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council and may be voted on separately. This includes the minutes of the regular town council meeting held on Monday, August 11, 2014, the minutes of the work session held on August 25, 2014. In the bill sheet that we have, an addendum two, which totals $122,454.61. There are additional bills that were added to our original packet. At this time, does anyone have any question? Take a minute or two, because I know you were just giving it. We had an addition of $9,842.47 worth of bills, and there was an adjustment on an addition.
May I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the additions.
Okay, it has been moved to second. All in favor, say the aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, aye. Okay, it's so carried that the consent calendar be accepted with the additions. Moving right along, the town manager's report.
Very short report tonight. We'll let everybody know that you recall we put a new floor in at the water plant. That is installed and taken care of. It looks good, so we're in good shape there. Reason, we had some disrupted tiles that had a concern that it might be some asbestos. I absolutely took care of that. I want to commend that the town workers are on the volleyball court. I'm sure Stevie will talk a little bit about that. But our part pretty much is finished, and they've really done an excellent job. Those that are going to be involved in it and pleased with it feel like it's really beyond their expectations. So we look forward to having that presented pretty soon. We waited on a few things that had to be ordered, so that'll be up and running. I will do it, I said I wasn't going to do it again. We've got a tentative pre-construction date on the sewer project for September 18. I said tentative.
10 o'clock, right?
We've got time. Specifically, they issued a notice to proceed following a pre-construction meeting. So we're hopeful that we have this meeting and that the notice to proceed is issued. Work should begin beforehand in September. A while back, you will recall council voted to purchase a leak machine that we need. We have ordered that leak machine. It should be here before the season begins. It's $26,600. Again, it's not cheap to do the things that we have to do in town sometimes. You know, if it was necessary and we had to have it. I wanted to make everyone aware of, it's not a real big deal, but I wanted you to know that we were contacted by Tyson Foods. They had an issue with, they had a term for, it's a byproduct from their boilers, some type of process that they use. It's basically water, a release of water. But there were levels of E. coli in that water that were not satisfactory as far as DQ was concerned. They contacted us about possibly treating that water for them. We did, John did a couple of tests, and he determined that the levels of the E. coli in this water were a small amount, that we could easily take care of the problem. The reason we're doing all this is we're looking at probably two loads a week, 20,000 gallons per load. It's $200 per load you will be receiving from that service. So that's just an additional income that we did not budget for. I won't let you in on that. And that's pretty much all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for the town manager? Town attorney's report.
Yes, thank you. Last town council meeting, I believe, it was from someone who was delegated looking into the issue of the speed limits in alleys in the town of Creve. And my research indicated that in residential and business districts in the town, pursuant to Virginia Code section, and it's a code section in 46.2, and if you all want the exact, I'd be glad to get it to you. The speed limit is 25 regardless, the state code. What I took that to mean then is that the speed limit in alleyways are, speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Now, with regard to if we want to put signs up, and I have been kind of waiting up and emailing back and forth about this, it's kind of a little bit of an interesting issue. Because, you know, with the alleyways, the BDOT, the transportation division technically, you know, doesn't control, does not own, does not maintain alleyways. But pursuant to the state code, BDOT is the one that regulates speed limits, not the tails. So what my suggestion is, I'm sure that the transportation commissioner will decline to, you know, have any say-so in the signs that would be put up in alleyways, signs for speed limits. But my suggestion would be just to make sure that we are A-OK and that there's no issues with enforcement and things like that. We may want to just get a letter from the transportation commissioner saying, you know, "I'm not going to put a sign up if you all want to go ahead." So, in summary, my conclusion is, speed limits in alleyways, so long as they are in residential areas or business district areas in the town, the speed limit will be 25. And we can run it by the transportation commissioner of the state before we put signs up. But my opinion is, given what the state code says about the speed limit being 25 anyway, is that it is enforceable.
I had, as mayor, a question here, because the situation involves a church. The church is on all sides where normal public parking would be, is no parking. So they can only park on their properties. So the alley goes through their properties, which is a town-owned alley, and they are afraid somebody's going to be run over. Because if you have 200, 300 people coming out of church in an alley and somebody comes 25 miles an hour through, which by law, what you're saying, that that is really a danger zone. And they have no, I mean, they literally have no other place to park in front of the church because it is Route 460 and it is no parking. And they have just a small area to the one street coming over. And then the rest of the parking is on private property, but the alley runs through it and literally through where the ramp comes down from the church for the handicap and all. We were hoping we could tell them because they could do it at 10 miles an hour.
Can we request that?
If the town council still desires to decrease the speed limit in that one area, it would likely need to run it by the transportation commissioner of the state of Virginia since they're the ones that set the speed limit. I did look and I tried to find anything that we could justify, you know, to say that the town controls the speed limit. But everything I found seemed to indicate that would be something we'd have to run by the state bars. And then we could go.
Regardless of whether they own it or not?
Regardless of whether they own it or not, I think that it's a prudent thing to do. I couldn't find anything specifically on this situation because it is kind of a unique situation like that. But if we were going to treat it as a road, which I think that we should and be very cautious about it, we'll run it by them. And then, you know, there's no reason why they wouldn't do what needs to be done. At least, that's what I'm gonna be.
So, talking to the chief a little bit. I think our intention specifically was this alley because of the traffic that goes through it. But my concern was we'd have the problem to do it for the entire town. We could set the speed limit wherever we wanted to, and I'm just hypothetical here. But our question was, could the police force enforce it? Would it stand up in court if they broke somebody that took a say in an alley and we'd set a 10 mile an hour speed limit? That was kind of one of the questions, too.
Yes, so long as the commissioner, transportation commissioner produces it because they're technically the ones that set the speed limit, then yes, that could be enforceable in court. That wouldn't be a problem.
That sounds like the key to that whole thing.
Yeah, and, you know, breaking the speed limit is breaking the speed limit. So we should be going as long as we, you know, clear what the transportation commissioner.
Who puts the sign up? Who puts the sign up? We would. You would, but you have to get their approval.
Correct, correct. And we would need to get their permission to put the sign up as well.
But doesn't the town maintain the alleyways in town?
Yes.
What about speed bumps?
Yeah, Wade and I talked about that.
What's the liability? Somebody, is it going through fast? On an alley going 20 mile an hour?
People are kind of responsible a little bit with their own actions because we put speed bumps up in there. Maybe she can check into it. I don't see how we'd be liable for speed damage because we put a speed bump up because somebody hit it at 30 miles an hour.
Well, what's the restrictions on speed bumps? Can you put a speed bump up at a 25 mile per hour?
It shouldn't be any of this private property, the town owns.
Well, it's public property, the town owns it.
Right. But still private property, but public access.
Right. We just stated on, we did.
Right.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying.
Just a suggestion.
I think, well, at one time, didn't we have speed limit signs in the alley right behind the town hall?
No, we had Do Not In them.
No. It's been years.
Well, I mean, the one way, you know, they didn't want you to turn.
Can we check into the liability of the speed bump?
We can.
Or have y'all already done that?
I haven't done that. It was a suggestion I had when Wade and I were talking, you know, what about speed bumps? Is just what I said, just thinking that. I'll be glad to look into it. I'm not sure if there's any cases that would be directly on point. I can definitely see both arguments. And the reason I say that is, you know, I think that at a valid point, people do have some responsibility for their actions. So if the town got sued, and the one thing you would have to look into before you looked into anything else is what kind of duty, what kind of responsibility the town would have. In other words, is it a proprietary duty or is it a governmental duty? Because that determines whether or not the town can even be sued for it or would the town be immune for it. If the town could be sued for it, then the question would be, well, you knew that people were speeding through there, and then you put up a speed bump, and now look what's happened. But then, on the other hand, the town's argument was, well, yeah, but you were contributorially negligent because you were speeding through there, so that bar is for covering. So I'll be glad to look into it just briefly if you all want.
How complicated would it be just to contact the commissioner and explain the situation and get their best advice?
Yeah, that's what I would do. That would be the best thing to do. And make sure that they don't wear no pants in there at all, and then get some sort of like letter from them.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, would you please? County attorney, do you have anything else?
That's all I have for today, just working on a lot of projects.
When we get to continuing business, I have a question there, and that's what the attorney also.
Sure. Okay, anybody else have any other questions? For her, for number one? Okay, committee reports, community development.
We are still on holding pattern. We were hoping, I began to sound like a broken record. We were hoping for a meeting last week, but that didn't take place, so.
I had a telephone call, which I will, I will add information for you.
But I do want to acknowledge one of our local businesses, J. and B. Printing, which Bill Foss is in the audience with us. He gave my business cards. I passed them out so y'all could all see them because I think they're lovely. And I think that this is something that is going to add to our project and my area that I will be passing it out because it has information for them of how to contact people. And so I wanted y'all all to see the work that was done and to congratulate one of our local businesses.
Thank you.
Any questions of the community development? Economic development?
Thank you, Mayor. The economic development committee met a few weeks ago, had another great meeting. And we will meet again in one week, on the 15th, Monday the 15th, at 7 o'clock at the airport. Our second major employer roundtable, we've set a date for that. It's going to be taking the place of our economic development committee meeting in October. So the second major employer roundtable will be Monday, October 13th. No, I'm sorry, October 20th, Monday, October 20th. And that will be here likely at 7 o'clock, but I'll bring that up again at our October meeting. The chamber met for the first time in a few months. They had the summer off. Met had a great meeting, and we'll be meeting again first Wednesday of every month. They're starting to look at Christmas decorations for the park. That decorating for the park already begins in next month, Saturday, 4th. So everyone come out and help with that. It's a great event. And Christmas is coming up, apparently. I'll be sending out a town email hopefully in the next couple of days. I usually do it towards the beginning of the month. I'm waiting a little bit longer so we can get this YouTube video up and a few other things announced that I'll announce this evening. Other than that, I have just a few things for new business, but that's my report.
Okay, any questions? Facilities and park and recreation, just.
I'm gonna save the volleyball court for last, but the first thing is soccer season opens up on the 13th, believe, of this month. The chamber is going to work on putting a bridge over the goalie at the park. We discussed that last month. We're talking with Al Elton on getting all the specs and stuff that way it can be handicapped accessible and stuff like that. And Keith's added a few things we got to look at before we start building. So I'll talk to Tammy about that more tomorrow than I did to talk to her today about it. And last but not least, the volleyball court looks outstanding. There's a few people that we all have to thank, and that's Crew Tracker. They donated, well, they let us use a few pieces of equipment to help get the sand all right and till it up and spray with bees and everything. So I want to thank Tray, Tray and Park for that. Norfolk Southern for donating all the cross ties. JR Dark, of course, with delivering it. Town and Crew, you know, the workers and everything did an outstanding job. It was great up there. And Wendy Bowen, she was the one that spearheaded this. The net will be here hopefully tomorrow or Wednesday, and it should be up and running. I worked with the net. They called me today looking forward to it. They're ready to go. We'll see how it goes.
I have one addition to add to his compliments. It's when our work crew was over there working, I looked around and over by our porta potty and all, there wasn't a trash can. And within the next day, the crew had built a holder and had a 55-gallon container there, you know, so that it's easily accessible for those who will use it. And, but it's there, easy to, you know, reach and, and it gives them very little excuse for not, for just throwing it on the ground.
I think things will be great. Things will be fine.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it. It was, the men, our men did manual labor. It wasn't all machines that moved that sand and spread it out. There was a lot of manual labor that went into it.
Well, the guys at Al's same job.
Any questions for him? Moving on to finance.
I received the monthly bills from Tiffany and everything appears to be all right.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Next, Public Works and Infrastructure.
Well, they, the end of the water plant, we had a little problem with the water. And Tony and his men spent quite many hours in it trying to retrieve water where we go through to the, into the plant. They successfully did that, took about 2 and 1/2 hours' weight. And Tony had to go down and come up, go down and come up. He said everything's good there. As far as the labor, it should be pretty much filled up now. We were one man short, I think, we made the efforts, come in with Monday. I just said I started to do. Started to do, all of that. And then also with the leak issue, Tony and I have been talking about that for several weeks like that. But all of that, it depends. I'll tell you that.
Okay, any questions for Public Works? Okay, personnel?
No report. Thank you for the good work that our town employees do month after month after month. It's not easy.
Public safety, Ms. Fisher?
No report on fire and rescue. Chief will have a report shortly.
Okay, we'll be back to our vice mayor now on the town comprehensive plan update.
I have passed around a survey that Councilman Ms. Govick and I worked on. We tried to combine some of the things that we had with the example from Gordonsville as far as format and so forth. We would appreciate it if you would look over it and maybe later on in the meeting so that we can get our project started. If this meets with your approval and we could get approval, we'd like to begin copying and distributing to public as soon as possible.
I do want to send one of these to the county planner, just in case there's anything. And I'll put her email, I'll put your email address on it so in case she has any comments, that way you know that everything will be okay.
Any other questions on it?
I still plan to have us meet for the workshop two Mondays from now. I have the September 22nd at 7 o'clock because the county planner will be here that evening to answer any questions and help us with anything that we should continue on. Hopefully, you know, keep it real short, but I'm so glad that we're moving along like we are. So do you want to wait to approve this after we talk at that 22nd? Not necessarily. I can scan this and email it to her tomorrow. And I will get her to email you any suggestions, you know, if she sees anything we're lacking, okay? And if not, you know that everything's okay.
Right, all right. Police chief?
Officer Hurlong, with everybody met at the council meeting, except that the full time is strong. I don't get it. Yes.
That would be a minor detail.
No, we still have it. I passed, gave everybody a flyer. We're going to have a little get-together, a little retirement party for Sergeant Shrek. He's got a total of over 40 years of law enforcement experience. About the Southern there, but it's like 15 years, and that's just here in the town. Everybody could come by, congratulate him, what's provided 40 years of police officer. It is. We're losing a good man when he walks out that door. Keep around his community, really respect. Sergeant, I look forward to seeing him. I'm sure he'll still be around, he just won't be in U. Other than that, everything's going pretty well.
We'll give him a gold watch.
Slow mo.
We'll give him a gold watch?
Did anybody have any questions on the report that was in our packet? Any questions for Police Chief?
Okay, well, I believe, I'm on CX. I first wanted to report that Ms. Kelly Hatcher, who is the notaway planner, contacted me last week, and it was in regard to the letter that I sent to Mr. Rourke requesting the assistance from the planner in helping us with our comprehensive plan. And she let me know that we would not have a meeting, which is normally the first Thursday of the month, but that Mr. Rourke did a straw vote of all the other members of the council, and they have given us approval for the assistance of the county planner. And I know that Ms. Hatcher is getting married next month, so I have a feeling, I think the wedding's like on the 8th or something, so I have a feeling we will not have a meeting next month. But she said that she will be coming to our work session. And like I had just told the vice mayor, I will go ahead and forward her this. She said, "Don't stop, don't hesitate. We've got momentum on this to keep going on our plan." That, you know, that she thought we were on the direct track. In regards to Lipscomb and Stratton project, she had been to a workshop prior to that about the rural development, it's community development that was the grant, correct? Community development for Lipscomb and Stratton, yes. She had been to a state workshop. And the reason why we haven't heard is because the individual, the money is in the process. And the reason why we haven't heard is because the individual, the money is in the process in coming through the proper channels. But, um, the individual, and Wade said that he hated hearing this, that, that was in charge has been in the hospital and gravely ill, and the state is having to reappoint somebody in this position. And I mean, uh, for us here in Crew, we have had a time with, with individuals in holding, um, the, um, responsibilities of these projects and illness and death. So, you know, I, I, we really do empathize and sympathize with the, the state. So that's why we haven't received an official letter, but she said that everything is moving along properly for our Lipscomb and Stratton street. I also received a stack of letters here that I, I wanted to share with you. Uh, one was, um, if, I think it was first dated back in June, but it came in the mayor's mailbox about a week and a half ago. And it has to do with the high school, and it is college and career day. And it was to dear Town of Crew. And I, the first evening I carried it home, I thought, "Now, how can I go promote at the high school?" I was trying, you know, my wheels were turning, and I was thinking, "Okay, what, what, what can we do? Because I, I feel like we're an important part of the community, and we wanna represent this to our, to our youth." And I asked Wade, and, um, at that time, he didn't have any, um, departments that, that he thought that, um, it would fit right into. And I went to our police department. And Officer, excuse me, Chief Booth has, um, set, has called, set up a, a schedule that our Crew Police Department will be at College and Career Day, um, for the youth. And, um, I think that's a plus. I also copied the letter and sent it to the emergency squad and to the fire department. Because I thought these are agencies that we want our, our youth who are in our county to participate in as they get older and all. Now, whether they will have, um, displays or anything there, I don't know. But I did, I did multi-copy the letter and, and send it on so we, you know, could get the information out because I thought it was really important for us to participate. The next thing is that, um, um, I received a letter, I think it came Friday, but it is, um, for those of you who may not know, that, um, Notaway County Health Department, um, the, uh, Department of Social Services, Mr. Reitmeyer has retired, and Christopher Spain has been hired to be, um, the director. And he sent a letter saying, "I am inviting you to partner with me and others who simply want to make life even better to, for the citizens of Notaway County." And in this, they, uh, the date is September twenty-third, and it's at two P.M. And, uh, you can RSVP, but if it's not, you know, mandatory and all, but it will be in the Health Department downstairs in that meeting room. And so any of council that would like to go, um, this letter will be laying on the little round table in my office and all.
Is it just a meeting brief?
Uh, it just says, "Please share this invitation with others." So, um, it says, "Let's begin by meeting to discuss community needs" and all. And, um, I have it on my calendar, um, and, uh, that, um, all of us are welcome. And, um, Chamber out there, Friends of Library and all, you know, if you're interested, I have it in that town hall. And, uh, we even have this email that, you know, would desire to, uh, attend. The third letter was from the Department of Transportation, and it has to do with the working draft of the revised fiscal year two thousand fifty-two, two thousand twenty. And, um, they have redone the six-year improvement program, and they are offering to special public officials, and I know just everybody at this table is special, but from, uh, a briefing from five to six P.M. on October first at Broad Street in Richmond, Virginia. If you're not able to attend there and you still want to know what is on, let me make sure I've got. There is some other, uh, meeting, for transportation, meeting dates and locations that have been provided. And again, I, I think what I'm gonna do is get a little notebook, put these in a town hall. And so anybody, you know, wanting to come by and check something out that, that makes available, then it'd just be laying on my desk. And then Dominion Power wanted us to know that, um, that the Southeast Reli, Reli, Reliability Project, which has to do with the gas line, has been renamed to American Coast Pipeline. And that, that, we are invited to attend an open house if, um, we have questions and all. And, um, they, they have, um, sent the Town of Crew a list of where they're meeting across the state. And September eighteenth is really the closest, um, area to us. There's two locations, one's at Buckingham and the other one is at Lawrenceville. And, um, there's a, uh, format of open house there that, um, um, can be, um, given for each meeting and all. So this letter will be available to you. I just wanted to let you know what comes in in case, you know, that there's something that, that you feel that, you know, that you can't attend and all. You know, we can be represented. The, um, other, um, things I wanted to remind you of, some community activities that are coming up. The, um, it's important for us to try to, um, participate in supporting our, our local civic clubs. The Kiwanis is going to hold a pancake dinner, and after an evening like this, it was like pancakes and sausage, and I call me, would've been good tonight, but on September eighteenth at the community center, there will be a pancake dinner. And then, um, I know that you all have recognized over the past months what has been, uh, happening in the transition of the improvements of the library, and now with the, uh, almost completion of the outside landscaping and all. And the Friends of the Library have planned in October to have a formal open house. And they would like, um, anybody in this room and friends, you know, all over town, please join them, um, on, um, October seventeenth. And, um, I think next month, Salatad Maiden will come and officially invite you. And we talked about even putting the little thing, um, on the radio at Coffee Chat, um, to promote, um, the public knowing that, you know, what has been done in the library and all. And, um, this will be just a, a floating drop-in with a few refreshments and all. And, uh, to see, you know, what, what has transpired and, um, what the, um, um, Friends of the Library have worked hard on, you know, to collect money and to do for, um, our community. Wanted to remind you about September the twenty-second at the library here for our, um, work session on comprehensive planning. And that next month, all of you, um, our regular meeting hits Columbus Day. So we will be meeting on Tuesday at, uh, October fourteenth at seven P.M. And, um, we, I, I think all of us have been real busy with things around town, and I appreciate everything that the council has done. I appreciate the police department, what you all have done, and all the town employees, the labor staff that they've done.
Mr. Walker, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
But I, I will have these, and I think a notebook and maybe out there where the papers are that you all have access. Two, if any of you are still wanting to look at the, um, the sheets that were presented to council on the fire, um, siren, uh, petition, they are available in my office. And if I happen not to be there, I'm, I, I hope the, the young ladies will be able to, you know, get it. I just didn't want that laying out where it could walk off and all.
Okay, new business?
Mayor, I have a couple pieces of new business.
Yes, sir.
Some, uh, some exciting announcements, and I've got copies of these for members of the media. Uh, the first announcement, uh, is a partnership between the Town of Crew and the Southside Virginia Family YMCA. Uh, the YMCA has agreed to, uh, try to bring some of their programs here to the Town of Crew to benefit, uh, not only us but all of, uh, Notaway County. Some of their programs, which may be included, uh, in what they're bringing, are their Silver Sneakers Program for active older adults, the Live Strong at the YMCA, which is a free, twelve-week research-based program that supports cancer survivors in gaining their physical, emotional, and spiritual strength, the YMCA, YMCA Diabetes Prevention Program, and other, uh, youth programs and activities. So this is a very exciting partnership with, uh, with, uh, Farmville, and hopefully good things will come of this. So we are inviting all, uh, community organizations, individuals, anyone interested in, presumably, on Wednesday, September seventeenth at five thirty P.M. And all that information's there in the press release I gave to everyone. We're, uh, we're very excited about that, and after we gather all the community members together and, uh, the, the community organizations and individual organizations choose which programs they wanna help host and sponsor, we'll have a kickoff, uh, kickoff and a health fair, uh, hopefully at the end of October. That's the, uh, that's the goal, and we'll see, uh, how far we get with that. Uh, any questions?
I just urge all citizens just to make sure y'all get the word out because this is big time. And, um, participation is tied, and like you said, good things can happen as in, we could, you know, possibly get our own. So please, spread the word and make sure that everybody gets out there and do as much as you'll.
The, uh, when, when, um, Phil and I met with, um, Jane from the, the Farmville YMCA, the possibilities are unlimited, what programs they can, you know, help us with, you know. We run for election, and we hear, "Oh, this town has nothing. This town, this town doesn't have anything to offer for so-and-so. It doesn't have anything to offer." The YMCA is all ages, and, um, you know, in the summertime after our Bible schools, it can open up to other activities for our youth. It can open up for activities for, you know, different age groups, you know, the, from the little ones all the way up to, you know, us with gray hair and can't get out there and play basketball and all, but there's other things that we can do. It can, it can reach out to caregivers. It, it can reach out to those who are, um, having health issues and all. And, um, but town council, town employees can't do it. It has to be the whole community, not only Crew, but the surrounding area. And, and this is just a fabulous opportunity because they are so, they're as excited as, as I am at the possibilities. And it, the only thing that will limit us is participation. If people aren't willing to step up and participate, then we won't have the things, and that's, that's what it takes.
Uh, that will be at five thirty, uh, P.M., and again, that's on September the seventeenth. That's a Wednesday, right here.
Like I said, this, this lady is very excited. She, she builds it up. I mean, she makes you feel good and excited about this program. So please, that's all we're asking is participation, but this, that's what gets it here. Please, tell your churches, tell your civic organizations, tell everybody. This is a big deal right here.
And, and some of the programs, there are ways that, that with the health-oriented ones, there are ways to where funding to help support these programs, she can help us with. You know, she, she has connections that, that can help us with. And, and when, we can take the, the resources that are here in our community and, and, and put them to more use for our citizenry. If, you know, if, if people will come together on this, it, it really is exciting.
Any other questions on that announcement? Uh, Jane Schirmer with, uh, she's the executive director of the Southside Virginia Family YMCA. S.H.I.R.N.E.R. Okay, uh, if there's no other questions on that, I've got another piece of new business, Mayor. Another announcement, very exciting. And I'll pass these out for the... Uh, we've heard, uh, time and time again that Crew does not have a, uh, full-service grocery store, and now that's a negative thing. What we're trying to do is create a program, a collaborative, to emphasize what we do have. Uh, we may not have a big flashy food line or Walmart or, uh, Kroger or, or whatnot, but what we do have are some great, uh, great places right here. A J Produce, you go, I mean, you can get pretty much anything you need. You can get your, uh, your canned goods, your meats, your produce, your, um, dairy and such. Crew Seafood, Dose Market, Dollar General, that is a lot of the, uh, things we need, as well as the convenience stores, books of supply, medicines, drugs, and some other, uh, farms and such out there. So what we're trying to do, and I, I think I brought this up at the last work session, uh, is to have a community meeting where I've invited each one of these, uh, entities that are listed there to come and, uh, i- it's an opportunity for them to discuss their issues for growth in, uh, in business, as well as the time for the community to get together and, uh, express what, uh, what it is we'd like to say. Uh, if there is a product that's not offered, throw it out there, maybe one of the, uh, business owners would, uh, start to carry that. So it's a way to, uh, grow the, uh, the small businesses and get feedback from both the, uh, business owners and the community, and really emphasize, uh, what we do have. Because, you, you know, we, we may not have a big flashy supermarket, but what we have is the authentic, local, um, family-oriented neighborhood businesses that are, uh, really the backbone of, uh, of small towns. Um, and it's, I've got a few more of these I can pass out to the rest of the people in the audience, but... But again, uh, the goals of this meeting, uh, which will be held on October second at seven thirty here, uh, are to, one, begin an open public discussion on why Crew does not have a full-service grocery store. Two, explain why the lack of full-service grocery store is not a, uh, a dire situation for the Town of Crew. And three, announce the Crew Grocery Community Collaborative, which is a partnership between existing and future grocery and supply businesses, the town and other stakeholders, to, A, educate the community on where to buy groceries and supplies locally, B, provide an opportunity for small business owners to work with each other to provide necessary groceries and supplies, and C, solicit feedback from the community on ways each business can improve, including suggestions for items they'd like to see offered. Uh, that's phase one. Uh, we have phase two and three, um, which are, uh, increasing outreach through various marketing methods, including, uh, creating a pamphlet, um, listing the collaborative shops and, uh, and the groceries and supplies they offer. And, uh, phase three would be, uh, identifying other vulnerabilities of the system and creating, uh, innovative solutions for, uh, addressing those. So this is a, uh, very exciting project. Um, I, like I said, I've already talked to owners and managers around town today, and they seem, uh, seem interested. So hopefully this'll, uh, pick up. Any questions on that?
We need to add Mexican.
Absolutely. And I know there's a few farms out towards, uh, built that have good products. Any other questions, comments, suggestions? Okay?
Okay, okay. Any new business? Other council members?
I do. I do have a couple pieces of new business as well. Other than those, uh, announcements. Um, the Virginia Mississauga contacted the town office and, uh, mentioned that they have body cameras for police officers uh, that they're willing to give to the town for free. Uh, I spoke with the chief about it, and he's not opposed to, uh, the officer's assignment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, so I would, uh, I would recommend that, um, we at least have them there in, maybe, uh, in the future start to use them, especially if they're free. Uh, I saw a news story not too long ago about the events out in Ferguson where these cameras, that, that they were looking at buying these cameras, and they cost something like nine hundred dollars apiece. I don't know if it's the same quality or the same type, but if we're, uh, if we're able to get them for free and it's something that we may wanna look at using in the future, it's certainly something to, uh, look into. So I would, uh, recommend that we get them. It's good for the officers and for the citizens.
Any discussion? Anybody have any?
It's free.
What is the process? Do, does the police department just contact them?
I believe they just got them sitting there, right, Tiffany?
Yeah.
I read the same article that you read about the, um, the Ferguson.
Right.
And body cameras.
I will say that, that I think it's a great idea, but there is...
but there is a downside to these cameras. The officer has to manually turn them on and off. So if it's a stressful situation, they jump out of the car, more than likely, they're not gonna turn it on. Regular, like a domestic call or something of that nature. I'm sure they'll remember to turn them on, but during a highly stressful situation, until they get used to it, they're probably not gonna turn it on.
Now, are, are our car cameras running at that point? And they would continue running?
Yes.
So, and they would pick up sound, correct?
Correct.
So I would, uh, move that we, uh, accept as many as we can for each of our police officers.
And they're free, I don't even think we even move here.
Okay, well, perfect.
Well, let's, okay, we, we, we have a motion on the floor.
It's a no brown.
Could we have, could, have a, to make it official, could I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved to second that we seek, uh, these cameras for each of our police officers. All in favor, signify by yay.
Yay.
Are we opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
And one last piece. Um, I went to a meeting, and this is not as pleasant, uh, last Thursday on, uh, biosolids in and around the, uh, the, or around the Town of Crewe, maybe not in the Town of Crewe. Um, I've got reservations about biosolids near the, uh, near the town. It, apparently they create a, uh, quite a pungent smell because of what it is. I wouldn't want to, I, I mean, I don't want to tell property owners what to do and what they can spread on their fields, but on the other side of that, anything near the Town of Crewe within a one or two-mile radius, I'd want to have some, uh, saying as, as far as the Board of Supervisors' decision. Like maybe not having biosolids spread within a one-mile radius of town limits? Or urging the supervi-, uh, urging the supervisors not to allow something like that? Only because it's, uh, again, a, an issue of odor, and I just want to get everyone's opinions.
My opinion is if it's ran on, there's nothing much you can do about it.
Right, well, the, uh, I, I believe it's a process that's approved by the, uh, by the Board of Supervisors and DEQ. Now, I mean, I, I, I guess the biggest concern is, or the, the, the touchiest issue is saying within a one-mile radius of Crewe. I would urge that nothing be allowed like that in the, uh, in the town limits.
Isn't this a fertilizer?
Yes.
That's what you're talking about.
It's a fertilizer from human...
And is it a persistence spell that continues on?
No, once it rains on, it's gone.
That's what I thought.
Once it rains on, it's gone.
So...
Plus they put, they did put lamb in it too, kept the smell down a lot too.
I thought we'd be encouraging them to do that type of thing.
I would encourage animal fertilizer.
Waste doesn't make a difference.
But I did this. I keep trying.
There's a difference.
To say things that happened in Newport News, but they had this program.
Mm-hmm.
And I actually made, uh, use of it. It was given freely to any neighbor. Now granted, I got some comments from my neighbors, but I thought they, they thought I had erected a barn. But, uh, it was quickly, it was quickly dissipated. And, uh, it was very, it was very good policy for this. They were trying to make use of available resources.
They get to the board of supervisors.
Well, I, I just want to get the, uh, the opinions of the rest of council. It's, yeah.
They've been doing it for a long time ago. They, they have spread it on top of the ground.
Sure, but, uh...
Then they got a subsoil that puts it in the ground. A guy by the name of, uh, Matt Jones from Nottaway purchased a machine years ago. And what he was doing, he was actually plowing it in the ground.
Right, but has it been in or around the town, correct?
I imagine, I mean, Ned Olds used it, uh, here, right here, right there, uh, that, um, he was at Crewe.
Would anyone know?
I imagine Ronnie Boyd uses it. Uh, Jake Vosse uses it on a lot of his property.
Okay, well, I will, uh, withdraw my objection, and if no one else is opposed to human, uh, biosolids, well, yeah.
Is, is, let me ask you this. Is there any expert that could come and, and give us a little more information? Because I attended the same meeting last Thursday, and, and it was more of a hands-on looking at something as opposed to asking questions and all. And, um, I, I think we're what, the latecomers in the, the process. So, you know, that would just maybe make us a little more informed. Not necessarily, you know, is, I think we lack really the information of what...
Well, I, I could certainly look into it a bit more, but if it's the consensus of council that no one else...